Okay, we will start the meeting. And I'm thank everyone's here. Robbie, will you lay this in brown?
Listen, most kind gracious Father Lord, we thank you for the day and all the many blessings, God, that you have bestowed upon us when we're so undeserved. God, I just pray that you'll be with this board of commissioners as we meet for the business at hand, board, as we all strive to serve the constituents of this county for the best of our ability. May we always look to you. In your son, Jesus Christ, name I pray. Amen.
Legislation. Ms. Jerry, Mary.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Row call.
Greg Brooks.
Here.
Debbie Davis.
Here.
Daniel Gill. Dewey Esponot.
Here.
Mark Evans.
Here.
Jeremy Kinsey.
Here.
John Pipinger.
Here.
Samantha Trenton.
Here.
James Woody.
Here.
Approval of amendments of the previous meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Row call.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Dewey Esponot.
Yes.
Mark Evans.
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
John Pipinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trenton.
Yes.
James Woody.
Yes.
Approval of reports of offices.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Approval of notaries. We have Jackie Russell, Kristy Harden, Joanna Harden, Carden, Cynthia Price. Any discussion?
Make a motion.
Any discussion? Row call. Pipinger and Evans.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Daniel Gill. Dewey Esponot.
Yes.
Mark Evans.
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
John Pipinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trenton.
Yes.
James Woody.
Yes.
Budget amendments. There is one, two, three, 101 general. One of them is for fifteen thousand, seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars, maintenance and supplies, twenty-six hundred and fifty dollars, library, training, assessors, travel, assessors' supplies, and data processing. And then, that's, this is a, this is thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and ninety-nine dollars and fifty-one cents for buildings, maintenance, and repair.
That one would be for the water lines. A lot of that is, is for the water lines that were put in up at these medical centers. And so, it's a flow-through from the hospital floater grant we got, but we had to pay it on the front end when we get our money back. I think it's twenty-six or twenty-seven and some change. And that went out there yesterday while I was there to make sure, cut off the main blocks and done it, so it's open and safe, so it is ready to release.
I didn't get them.
I laid them up.
Oh, okay. All right. The other one is maintenance and repair, fifteen hundred dollars. Veterans director, thirty-five hundred dollars. That's also under the 101 general. So, that is a total of five, four, three, I mean, one, two, three, four, five. Total of five.
What's total of seven, please?
So, eighteen, eighteen, eighteen through twenty-two.
Make motion to approve those amendments, fund 101, numbers eighteen through twenty-two.
Any more discussion?
What? You said something about a water line. I don't see anything on here about a water line.
And that's part of the flow-through money that we have for the water line, for the grant, the hospital floater grant that we received?
Is that number twenty you're talking about?
I don't have it on the front of.
Yeah, it is, James, twenty.
It just says hospital grants over your fund, it doesn't say anything about water, reason I asked.
Will she fill that terms? I'm sorry. I've got a question, I think it's number twenty-two, one of the veterans. It says, you've got my copy. It says to alleviate in case there's more than forty hours work in the two-week period. It's coming out a clerical into administrator. Is there, how, how would it come about that it goes over in the two-week period on the forty hours?
I'm not for sure on that. That would be a question for us.
I mean, does this deal with, does anybody know if this deals with training or is it something?
Says to have tons of faith in a rare case that the veterans director, which works over the projected set salary hours.
Boy, you walked in wrong. Number twenty-two, boy, did he.
Exactly. This is?
Yeah.
That was a request from Tan, just like, he had to go to Nashville last week. He set salary at the forty hours for two weeks, in the rare case that he does go over.
So, he went over last week, so he's at the third.
And he takes like, a lot of his guys, I think, to the doctors, and he gets nothing for that.
She said that in, in the, he's not actually went over yet.
No, he's not.
He said in the rare case that he does.
We were just talking about if he did.
Right.
If he got.
So, it's like, any like training or, or extra things like that?
He has no in-service line or anything to pull any money like that from.
So, there's no training line in his, but?
And he doesn't have a clerical, I mean, he doesn't fill that position.
Any more discussion? Okay, any more discussion? Row call.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Dewey Esponot.
Yes.
Mark Evans.
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
John Pipinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trenton.
Yes.
James Woody.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, appointment of the twenty-twenty agriculture extension members. Greg Paxton, you've got the floor.
Y'all got my vote.
Got you, Larry.
Since that time here, we have several that, their two-year terms have expired on the extension act committee. Those were Candace Bates, Kevin Smith, Carmen Ray, Johnny Dunn, and Greg Brooks. And all of these are eligible for another two-year appointment, and that is our recommendation. These need to be reappointed for another two-year term.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Row call.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Dewey Esponot.
Yes.
Mark Evans.
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
John Pipinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trenton.
Yes.
James Woody.
Yes.
Show barn beds. County Executive.
As was just talked about in buildings and grounds committee meeting, the building and grounds committee recommends bring forward a commission for a full vote for awarding the bid for a steel building of Sanders Ford Company in the total amount of seventy-eight thousand, five hundred and ninety-six dollars and eighty-eight cents. I talked with Mr. Paul Arshambo, which I'm sure Greg's talked to him quite a few times as well, I know I have talked to him twice today. Even though a steel building may not be in the exacts, it was bid out in such a way, and everybody here said it, and we've said it, and we've said it, that this was a very loose RFP when it came out, was what we got. And if you read it the first time, whenever Greg and I looked at it, it was really a something. But anyway, so with doing this, this would be an opportunity to have the best option. As you see on that with email correspondence, it says with a new building, would this cause any problem contracting? Pope County really wants to get this project complete. The project would be going by the, he imagines that the project would be getting going now within the month. However, we understand that it is set to be expired on February twenty-eighth. There's an extension being awarded with this, since we're working on this. We took the lighting out, but the county will come back in and put LED lighting into the show barn. As I told the sanitation committee, or the buildings and grounds committee earlier, there's a whole lot of these fixtures that you see in the courthouse that are downstairs, as well as a lot of eight-foot bulbs. We could come back and put LED bulbs into for around quarter, five dollars a piece, per bulb. That's what these in the courthouse cost. So, this is a way for us to finally get the show barn taken care of, so that committee run it forward, go to the full commission.
So, how much is the grant that we got?
Seventy-five thousand. Yes, if you, and I'll get some more papers for everybody on the commission, I just got enough for the actual committee, as it lists out, the grant request is seventy-five thousand, the match fund to ten percent is eight thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars for a total project budget of eighty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars.
Eighty-three what?
Eighty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars.
So, the whole project will be covered under a grant?
Yes.
Grant plus?
The grant plus, yes, of course.
The ten percent match.
We'll have to keep that in, and then it will work itself back out once everything is typed in.
So, will our money come back in?
Everything but the match, everything but the match. The ten percent of the seventy-eight thousand, five hundred and ninety-six.
Right.
The ten percent goes in first, and then walks back.
And he comes back in.
So, you ten percent, well, ten, the ten percent was of the.
Eighty-five thousand.
Yeah, no, but there's a, there's about two or three fees, and then it's enacted off, it's never just, it's never just a match, there's process.
So, how much are we just gonna be paying?
Home Bay County's final line bill, after all, grant money's paid.
Seventy-eight. Seventy-eight, then when we come back in and do the lighting, I mean, if you want to include that onto it, we're still about to make, we're still gonna be underneath, picking a thousand dollar warrant, people, they're trying to pay our part and do some more of the wiring themselves.
No, we do have, we had our budget meeting, so we have that money, we have to, so we don't have to watch.
Our ten percent match should turn out to be seven thousand, eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars. And then us, coming in doing some wiring, some light.
Make motion to accept this bid, it's been recommended by the building and grant.
Any more discussion? Row call.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Dewey Esponot.
Yes.
Mark Evans.
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
John Pipinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trenton, pass. James Woody.
Yes.
Seven yes, one pass.
Sanitation update.
Sanitation committee met and based off of the recommendations from sanitation committee that you heard from your workers, some of the things that they encounter. One was, was to bring a resolution before the county commission for a full vote. I have these, I have both of these resolutions, they're not numbered, in case you all wanted to approve one, or you did not want to approve the other. Let me read them, you want.
Go right ahead.
Okay. Resolution one-one-twenty, if this were passed. Whereas the county has received reports that some individuals using the convenience centers are not complying with the convenience center rules and regulations. Whereas in an effort to eliminate this issue, the sanitation committee recommends that the county executive and convenience center workers be authorized to enforce the convenience center rules and regulations to refuse, accept solid waste, and suspend individuals that are not in the compliance of the convenience center rules and regulations. Now therefore, be it resolved with this legislative body in session and assembled, that one, the county executive and convenience center workers are authorized and directed to enforce the convenience center rules and regulations. Number two, the county executive and convenience center workers are authorized to refuse, to accept solid waste, and suspend individuals from using the convenience centers that are in non-compliance with the convenience center rules and regulations. All individuals that are suspended from the usage of a convenience center shall have the right to come before the sanitation committee, and the right to appeal before the Pope County Commission. Be it further resolved, this resolution take effect from this date after it's passed it in the public welfare requiring.
Motion to approve, resolution one-one-twenty.
Second.
But I got a question.
Discussion.
How are they, how are they gonna do this? They gonna run around with a clipboard with them on their, on their job to have everybody's name and everything to check them off?
Well, a lot of the times, whenever this happens, is I have been notified, I get tag numbers. And nine out of ten times, I'll contact sheriff's department and find exactly who it was that just gusped, throw gravel, spit ass, told them to stick it in their ears and everything else. So, that's, that's one way. Like I said, these are now county employees that have endured, and they, there's nothing there to give them that authority. But it also gives a, a resident to be able to come back before the committee. Everybody will have a bad day, I understand that, but it gives them that right to be able to come back. Then as well, the sanitation worker can contact the sheriff's department, the sheriff's department will then get involved. And we've already discovered, stat is in the committee meeting that we had last week.
On the possibility of suspending for use, if the infraction is just not allowing them to, for whatever reason, without a major turmoil down there, they will still be able to come in, you know, if they're told they can't come, can't come back and dump whatever. They can still come to your office and get the permit.
Correct.
This would be more, if there would be more of.
Aggression.
Aggression types.
Aggression.
Okay.
You know, and that's the thing that's happening right now, our workers at these sites, forty-two?
Yesterday.
Am I correct when I have any applications?
Forty-one or forty-two.
Forty-one or forty-two applications were done yesterday. And this evening before I walked out of the office, there's twenty, twenty-one. So, your workers are doing their job. But you, if somebody does not want to follow those rules, I mean, that's what they're asked for. They're asked for, if they have, don't have Pope County plates, they're asked for their permit. If they don't have a permit, they're told until you have that permit, you know, if that's all they like, they'll tell them until you go get that permit.
Now, the Pope County plates, though, is taken, if you've got Pope County plates, no questions asked.
No questions asked. You have Pope County plates.
This is the first month or two? Yes, it's a headache, but I'm glad to hear that's forty-two people coming in. That means our system is working, and there's gonna be huge savings, you know, about the county trash at the end of the year. And it's, the, I can say it's a problem, but the extra trouble, like Lois having to go through now, this go away in a month or two. And it's gonna be a savings from now on, once we work through the bumps in the road and get everybody straightened out. But it's gonna be a huge savings for the county.
I've got a question about this, but it's not directly taken into this resolution, but they're about to ask you after we vote on this, about something that brought my attention, dealing with pretty much this, this issue.
We're ready to roll call. But any more discussion?
Who's second question?
Who's second, Larry?
I didn't, yeah.
You can't, I can't hear nothing down here.
No, I can't hear all of it.
And if you're up higher, you can't hear nothing, if anybody can't hear.
Question on which tags are responsible to get it. So, if they have a specialty tag, they've gotta come get a permit. If they reverse the tag, they gotta come get a permit.
If it doesn't have Pope, the county.
If they have a government tag.
Specialty tags cannot have the county sticker on them.
Right, government tags, we're, we have not been enforcing government tags because those are government, this is for the residents, this is what we're working on right now with these specialty tags. I've had like, the city of Ducktown called, the city of Copper Hill called. I mean, the sanitation workers, they know who've worked for the city of Ducktown and cities, so there's no, there's no need right now in government tags, it's just for those specialty tags. And that's what the committee had recommended, the sanitation committee had recommended this.
A lot of these, these rules are not something that we let enforce a hundred percent, they're in place to have something to fall back on. Common sense goes a long ways. I've worked South Pope last two Saturdays, and I can tell you a couple, like, one of them worked Clayton Flywood, he's got a drive on the truck, and it says commercial tag, but just common sense, you know, I've known, he's lived here all his life, and I didn't even bank to look at these tags, I knew there was no need to. So, this rule was really something to follow back on, not to enforce across the board, and the common sense part has been working pretty good, too. There's a fine meeting, and I think the workers are doing pretty good here, too, just the question was the ones that the rules apply to.
Yeah, they, they learn faces real quick, and you know, it's.
And I think that's important, Robbie's doing a good job, too, of keeping the same worker at the same site all the time, but that cuts down on a lot of confusion, too, because they getting over people pretty quick.
Yeah.
Row call.
Row call.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Dewey Esponot.
Yes.
Mark Evans.
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
John Pipinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trenton.
Yes.
James Woody.
Health department.
No. You got on sanitation.
Oh.
Sanitation. Got one more.
You got one more? This is dealing, did you wanna ask that question down there?
Actually, yeah, I do. And this'll take just, no, it'd be better to announce with some statements, but I do wanna ask you about sanitation, some complaints I've had, and how we're addressing.
This would be resolution eleven-twenty-one, if this passes. You won't touch your computer.
Go ahead, I need, got it, keep it.
This is another one that comes forth from the sanitation committee. Resolution requiring Pope County residents with a specialty license plate that does not indicate the person is a resident of Pope County to obtain a permit from the county to use our convenience center. Whereas, the convenience centers are for Pope residents only, whereas the county has received reports that some non-residents of Pope County have been attempting to use the convenience centers. Whereas, some vehicles have specialty license plates that do not indicate that the person is a Pope County resident. Whereas, the specialty license plate may get difficult for the workers at the convenience centers to identify the person as a resident of Pope County. Whereas, in an effort to eliminate this issue, the sanitation committee recommends that the Pope County residents with a specialty license plate that does not indicate the person is a resident of Pope County be required to obtain a permit from the county to use the convenience center. Now therefore, be it resolved with this legislative body in its assembled, Pope County residents with a specialty license plate that does not indicate the person is a resident of Pope County are required to obtain a permit from the county to use its convenience center. And therefore, be it resolved with this resolution to take effect. And if you remember, the committee has set forth till March the first, and just to make sure everybody understands what specialty plate, we're trying to make it as easy as possible for county residents. If you have a specialty plate that attendant at the site will give you the paperwork to fill out, it says specialty plate. All we ask is you bring a form of ID, and you can hand it back to the attendant, only special plates, so we're make, trying to make it easy. I myself, or the working attendant, will get that back to my office, and you have till March the first with a special plate.
As far as ID?
Or they can, or the, as the.
Registration.
The worker that works the site, they can look at the ID to identify that. But, as Commissioner Piveter pointed out that day, it says Pope or a permit. So, that's one of this that's coming forth for the committee, or the commission.
The ID, what are we gonna require? What are we gonna require for an ID?
They have to have one proof of ID with a specialty. It can be that there's a water bill in their name, maybe a copy of their driver's license, or a print, anything to identify that.
Well, the most foolproof way would be registration, because, just say, Jeff's got a specialty tag, his registration is gonna say Pope on it, now, you can get down around South Pope and use a driver's license, and there's some addresses on Bates Pike, it's in Braddock County, that says Old Ford, and that'd be easy to miss that, just got it said Old Ford, that I'd get a good part. I would require anybody with a specialty tag, I mean, that's simple, it's no questions asked, you show them a vehicle registration, it either says Pope or it don't say. I think that's foolproof, and the driver's license, myself. There may be some in Main County, too, it's similar, I don't know, but for sure, South Pope, there's lots of Old Ford addresses, well, just like this later here, you know, the Benton zip code, you know, a lot of them go over in Braddock County, and the same thing there, there's a scabs people on Bates Pike with an Old Ford address, and a three-seven-three-six-two zip code.
Benton Station, same way, Charles.
So, I think the foolproof, if I pull up the Papa Smarter's tag, which I hope nobody does, but if it is, then the registration, I mean, it's gonna say Pope or it's not gonna say Pope.
And it'll also have their physical address, the street they live on, on your driver's license.
It will, but, well, somewhere, employees will miss, but if they're not familiar with Bates Pike, and it'll say Old Ford, Tennessee, three-seven-three-six-two, but they're still in Braddock County, just the same as Benton Station over here, there's people living in Braddock County, and it's got a Benton address and a Benton zip code.
Same way with Dillon, that's a lot of Dillon.
It's the forms, we can't leave one loophole in it, 'cause people figure out a way around, we do.
And that's how come we don't use driver's licenses, and if anybody wondering why we don't use driver's licenses, that's the reason why.
So, you're saying you can use a tag receipt instead of a permit?
No.
No. To get a permit.
To get a permit.
But that's foolproof way of nobody following through the cracks.
Correct.
The one on Bates Pike, you got a specialty tag. Uh, the one on Bates Pike, he got a specialty tag, whatever, you say, let him see your registration. If he's in Braddock County, his registration's gonna say Braddock County. Show the road. But if not, if he just went off his driver's license, uh, it'd be hard to tell if he lived in Polk or Braddock. But the registrations are foolproof.
And I'm sure above the mountain, it's big country.
Does anybody know in Carolina, West State, where it counts down? There's a lot of distance down there. An Old Ford address, and I live in Braddock County, so one-one-two. One-one-two, or it's the first one, we passed it, this is one-two. This is the second one, first one. Okay, we had Mr. Duncan. I make a motion to approve resolution one-two twenty.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? Roll call.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Dewey Eskenau?
Yes.
Mark Evans?
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey?
Yes.
John Pippenjer?
Yes.
Samantha Trenton?
Yes.
James Woody?
I ask.
Seven yes, one pass.
Matt, Health Department update.
On the Health Department, I know a lot of yous have asked, they have been working on that. We found a way to take one of the bathrooms around the back, which is gonna save some of the initial costs, because the inside work was a lot more expensive. HNL Construction is finishing that up. They probably would've finished earlier this week with all the rain and storms, so Health Department's just about done. Also with the Health Department, they're wanting to turn out a set of RFPs, so they can get started on the front work. That's where they're gonna be redesigning and redoing a lot of the front. They're gonna be using their money. And remember back a couple months ago, where it, well, it's either we give the money to the state, or the state's gonna let us use our money to update our building. And so that's what we're getting ready to do on that part. That's just to keep everybody in the loop of what's going on at the Health.
Are we still within the parameters of our money?
Yes.
With what they're fixing up?
Yes.
And was that the water line update also?
Yeah, the water line update was part of that other. Water line's done. As I said, I was up there the, yesterday, meters are installed, or cutoffs are installed, meter boxes are set. It's sewn, it's cased, and we will be releasing that check to HNL Construction, since they got that, that taken care of. And the tendents have been told to get the meters swapped over into their name.
What's our issue, what's our estimate on that, on the meter change?
Oh, it's, yeah, this is, I told them just as soon as it got tied in, they need to get on over as quickly as possible. I'm not, no, they don't, they don't want to take it.
Where's that water line come up there at?
Behind the hospital.
Behind the hospital? So all of the work's done, kind of y'all give it, that, uh, south east corner?
Comes all the way around behind the hospital, goes around the side, you know where the sewer left station is? At the hospital? The sewer station at the hospital?
Yeah.
You know where that's at? It goes around to the sewer station, comes up and ties into the backside of each and every one.
So I just up there, and I didn't, you know, when this originally came up, you was talking about going through the parking lot and all that?
No, we talked about going in behind. No, we talked about staying in behind, it was easy to stay in behind it. We had them to move the water meter off the top of the mountain. The water meter used to sit all the way up on top of the mountain. And they brought the water meter back down to where it used to sit back fifteen, eighteen years ago. Because if not, we would've had to push through the pines even to try to set water meters up on top of the mountain. And so we brought it in and set it around in between the flat parts, the two buildings. We know the building is in the back, stays on the backside of it.
All right, we've got a request for the suspension of the rules by Commissioner Eskenau for the purpose of the resolution of no consent to refugee resettlement. Suspension calls for two-thirds of the majority when we do a suspension of the rules. And we also will have another, uh, request from the, uh, library board. But anyway, the first one will be this resolution of no cons, consent to refugees resettlement in Polk County.
We'll suspend it further.
Yeah.
I make a motion to suspend the rules for the purpose of the library request and what looks like will be resolution one-dash-three-dash-twenty, which is a resolution of no consent to refugee resettlement in Polk County.
Oh, Samantha seconded. Any discussion? Well, we don't have discussion on that.
Well, I do have a question, and I ask this every time, Mr. Eskenau. Is this something that, uh, needs to be done before the next commission meeting, so it can be put on the agenda? I mean, is this something time-sensitive?
No. It's not time-sensitive. In fact, I'd like all the commissions to be able to read it before we bring it up. I don't know if they've had a chance to do it or not. Although I don't like to get stuff thrown at me without having time to read over it and digest it. I don't know if everybody received the email, to read over it or not. If they have, if I-
I've read mine.
I read mine here tonight.
I, I was starting over.
And all reason, all reason I ask, I've asked that same question since the commission passed the, uh... The suspension of rules a few years back. We had a lot of things that just come in every month, and thrown out at the end of the meeting, and what, even only agenda. And so, two things, is one is an emergency situation, the other is, you know, something that we have all month. That's the only reason I ask that. So is it? We've got a motion.
All right, we'll do a roll call on the suspension.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Dewey Eskenau?
Yes.
Mark Evans?
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey?
Yes.
John Pippenjer?
Pass. Pass.
Samantha Trenton?
Yes.
James Woody?
Yes.
Seven yes, one pass.
Hey, don't matter. We was, um, well, we can go ahead and do the library, that'll give everybody a second more. On behalf of the Polk County Library Board, I request approval from the commission on two matters. Please approve the addition of Deborah Williams to the Polk County Library Board to finish the unexpired term of Nicholas Lewis. This term expires on six-thirty, twenty-twenty-one. Also, please approve the addition of Bill Miller to the regional library board to finish the unexpired term of Nicholas Lewis. This term expires on six-thirty, twenty-twenty.
Make a motion to approve. Only got some nine. Nine, six.
Six.
Woody second.
Any discussion?
Roll call.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Dewey Eskenau?
Yes.
Mark Evans?
The library?
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey?
Yes.
John Pippenjer?
Yes.
Samantha Trenton?
Yes.
James Woody?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, now back to the resolution. Dewey, would you like to read your resolution?
You took it from me.
You should've had a coffee. Hold on a minute, Mark's reading it.
Go ahead, feel free.
Resolution of no consent to refugee settlement in Polk County. Whereas, the president issued the presidential determination on the admission of refugees for fiscal year 2020, setting the admission cap at eighteen thousand. And whereas, in two thousand seven, Governor Bill, Bill Bredeis, withdrew Tennessee from the federal refugee settlement program. And whereas, in 2016, with overwhelming support in the state House and Senate, the Tennessee General Assembly passed SJR four sixty-seven, and subsequently filed a lawsuit, which is ongoing, challenging the federal refugee settlement program for violating Tennessee's Tenth Amendment. And whereas, generally, the lawsuit alleges the commandeering of state funds to pay costs associated with refugee settlement program, which have been shifted to the state without its consent by the federal government. And whereas, the transferred federal costs are ultimately paid by Tennessee state taxpayers. And whereas, President Trump issued Executive Order thirteen-eight-eighty-eight, enhancing state and local involvement in refugee settlement, which requires written consent from both the governor and the chief executive officer of local government, county or county equivalent, for their initial resettlement of refugees into specific communities. And whereas, the U.S. State Department Bureau of Population, Refugees, and Migration has operationalized the consent requirement through the fiscal year 2020 Notice of Funding Opportunity for Reception and Placement Program, issued on November sixth, twenty nineteen. And whereas, the funding notice permits federally contracted refugee settlements agencies to resettle different groups of refugees anywhere from fifty to one hundred miles away from the resettlement agency offices in consenting counties, such that non-consenting counties, cities, and towns can be forced to participate in the initial resettlement of refugees. And whereas, refugee resettlement agencies maintain offices and operations in Davison, Shelby, Hamilton, and Knox Counties. And whereas, John Cooper, mayor of Nashville and Davison County, has issued a letter of consent to Secretary Mike Pompeo, and it's anticipated that Shelby County Mayor Lee Harris, Knox County General Glenn Jacobs, and Hamilton County Mayor Jim Coughlin will do the same. And whereas, the U.S. State Department reports show that upon arrival, refugees have previously been resettled in locations including Clarksville, Laverne, Smyrna, Murfreesboro, Mount Juliet, Franklin, Spring Hill, Shelbyville, Gatlin, Johnson City. And whereas, Governor Lee, by letter dated December eighteenth, the U.S. Secretary of State Mike Pompeo, per the terms of Executive Order thirteen-eight-eighty-eight, has consented to initial refugee settlement in Tennessee with no exemption for non-consenting counties. And whereas, the letter dated December eighteenth, twenty nineteen, to Lieutenant Governor McNeely and House Speaker Sexton, Governor Lee defines his dissent as valid for one year in conflict with the terms of Executive Order thirteen-eight-eighty-eight, and the funding notice, which only requires consent for the period of time, June first, twenty twenty through September thirtieth, twenty twenty. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Polk County does not want to be forced into participating in the federal refugee resettlement program due to either Governor Lee's consent and/or being within the permissible placement radius of resettlement agency office. Be it further resolved that Polk County requests that Governor Lee retract his consent for initial resettlement in Tennessee for both one-year period of time, as stated in his letter, and/or the actual consent period required by the funding notice. Be it further resolved that Polk County requests that, in the event Governor Lee does not retract his consent for initial refugee settlement, that he submit a revised letter of consent to U.S. Secretary Pompeo and to Lieutenant Governor McNeely and the House Speaker Sexton, exempting non-consenting counties from being forced into initial resettlement of refugees in Tennessee. Be it further resolved that Polk County requests that Governor Lee, by written notice, inform the resettlement agencies which maintain offices and operations in Tennessee that they may not place arriving refugees in non-consenting counties. Adopted this sixteenth day of January twenty twenty by majority of Polk County commissioners.
I make a motion to adopt this resolution.
We got a motion and a second? Discussion? Any questions?
What office is it, uh, is it this specified to a specific set of refugees? Or is it across the board, what's the parameters on the, what was eighteen, what'd you say the action number was?
President Trump set the cap at eighteen thousand for the United States.
So is this within that eighteen thousand, or is this any additional?
This is the eighteen thousand.
We're at eighteen thousand.
We double our population.
Okey-dokey. They can't finger on people. All right, any more discussion? Roll call.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Dewey Eskenau?
Yes.
Mark Evans?
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey?
Yes.
John Pippenjer?
Yes.
Samantha Trenton?
Yes.
James Woody?
Yes.
I guess.
Any... Oh, yeah, I've got a question for you, Matthew. Okay, I had a couple mentions, and told about a blast concession on social media, and it was a few, uh, county's, and us, about, uh, our movement with sanitation. Apparently, we screwed up, but I'm trying to figure out what, you know, what the parameters are. It's trash on the side of the road that's been zoned out lately, above the mountains. At the same time, I think, Kim, did you have some, did somebody contact you on this? Your name's been mentioned.
Yeah, I have, I'm talking about that.
Okay, so what's the deal, how we screw up, or they're saying we screw up? What have we done and how we correct it?
All right, it was, it was brought to my attention, and Matthew and Jeremy both brought it to my attention, that there was a recent post on Facebook that talked about the sanitation issues in the county. And some things were said, um, and done. So whenever I got word of it, and I thank Matthew for sending me the video, I thank Jeremy for going with me and actually showing me where it was. And, uh, Roy Keith and the trustees also went with us, didn't they, Jeremy?
Yes.
And helped us. So anyway, we go on Stansberry Mountain Road, and we found a little fifty-five gallon barrel that has trash written on the side of it. A replanter, um, some luggage. Anyway, I took the opportunity, and Jeremy did as well, as well as trustees. We found names, addresses, social security numbers, military discharge papers. Uh, and I've got a treasure trove of information that I brought back. And I took it to our letter grant coordinator, in which that should be a fine for at least the three people's names. the three people's names. I've also found out that a little more investigating, that more than likely, this tried to go into one of our dump sites. Just don't say who, but this property owner lives in Georgia, and it was his trash and this property owner's trash that was on site road. So if this owner had Georgia tags and tried to go into a dump site, whenever they were asked if they had the proper paperwork, they told them no. So our attendant done what we've been wanting our attendants to do, to keep out-of-county trash out of our county. And now I'm speculating, but one of these two property owners on their way back home, which the road that they live on runs off Stanbury Mountain Road. And I've got the addresses to verify what I'm saying on my phone. So they decided to dump their trash on. So like I said, it's cleaned up, it's taken care of as far as we go. But it was one of these individuals that decided to throw their trash on the side of our county road.
So these two reside in Georgia?
No. They... These homes reside here in Tennessee off of a road that is off of Stanbury Mountain Road. They live adjoining each other, own 1.45 acres. He applied for a permit to have power turned on in 2019 to the property's asset office.
So they own a county residence.
Yes.
What'd you say about Georgia? What'd you say about Georgia?
This resident that lives here receives their tax information in Georgia. So they own a home here, but they also live in Georgia.
Oh, okay.
So if they brought their trash into a Polk County convenience center with an out-of-county plate, and our attendant asked them for the permit...
They didn't have it.
They didn't have it. They couldn't afford it.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, I understand that.
So then on their way home, they took another road off the home they live on, which was Stanbury Mountain Road, and they decided that they were going to throw their trash off on the side of Stanbury Mountain Road.
But they didn't throw them road that they live on?
No.
They went and found somebody else's.
Correct.
Then the guy in the video now accuses us of driving a ball reason it happened. But that's done our job is reason it happened.
Yeah.
And then they broke the law, so...
That's the barrel, ain't it, Jeremy?
That is the barrel that had the goodies in it.
Whenever we went up there, Jeremy started, he said, "Goats from here all the way around." And I told him, I said, "I want the blue barrel." And he said, "Why do you want the blue barrel?" I said, "I'll tell you." Because in the video, you can see paperwork. And like I said, there's military discharge papers, social security numbers, and there's addresses.
Apply for a credit card form.
Well, in all honesty now as well, one of our trustees...
Charge on Amazon.
One of our trustees did find a credit card, but it said, "By you customer." And he asked if he could use that, and I told him, "He was more than welcome to use it." But it didn't get him no one.
I think the guy played the video, was a federal employee on federal time, and he was driving a taxi and driving his video, which is also against the law.
Well, now...
That's false information.
Well, and I did do a little video myself as I put my phone into the window, so...
Oh, I didn't have to send you to take it from there.
Yeah, I didn't. No, I stopped. But I did, just to show, I personally am sick and tired of people taking advantage of my county. And I appreciate the Commission, like Jeremy going digging in trash with me. Greg, Saturday, dug through two bags of trash with myself that was thrown off in Lindsdale. Mark, who'd been there before, has been threatened and cussed to get whooped because somebody outside the county was trying to dump. But Mark's been there, and Samantha to call, John's helped me throw bags of trash. All of you all that's helped me, I appreciate this.
They've been found some on site.
I had to go come up.
And here's you a little scoop.
Come on, we're not lying.
You know, and everybody wants to know. Here's you just a little bit, just a little side note. What our trash was costing us at Benton was $83.60 a ton. And you think that's expensive? South Polk was costing this county $78 a ton. Lindsdale was costing this county $107 a ton. Reliance was costing $163.14. Compactor average weight out of Reliance was 4.26 tons in the month of December. It was pulled five times. You had 71.85 tons. Lindsdale, average pull was 5.67 tons. You had a total tonnage of 22.68 tons out of it. South Polk, you averaged 6.5 tons. You had 52.42 tons. Listen to this total.
That was December before the county.
And that's...
That's how it cost, right?
That what we were paying SandTech... We paid SandTech a total of... Could I get someone off his phone? It was like 35... There you go. SandTech was paying $35,213.56 in the month of December. And they didn't get offered a week in this county. Cause the change-up. All right. And I understand, and I appreciate everybody that has been paying. The pre-crusher is set for this. VEC is coming tomorrow to change over the transformers. And the road departments, since the road department's gonna be closed because it's on their side of the lot, so it's gonna work out real good. They build a downtown tomorrow, may not be. But when this pre-crusher gets to running, and here's your little comparison, we had a total of 154.79 tons in the compacters at Benton. You had one compactor that averaged 4.3 tons of pull. You heard right, a compactor with 4.3 tons. You had another compactor that averaged 6.49, and you had one other compactor that averaged 7.19. So your three compacters averaged 6.44 tons at Benton. You had 154 tons of trash that went into the compactor at Benton. That 154 tons, and I've got all these numbers, if you want, come see me. The compactor cost for the 154.79 tons costed $2,786.22. Tonnage. It cost a trucking fee of $5,269. The compactor cost at Benton was $8,055.66. Now listen to this. Your open tops were 153.46 tons. We're real close, the same amount of tonnage in an open top as you were compactor. But your tonnage fee for your open top was $2,762.28. Still real close. Your trucking fee increased from $5,269 to $11,636.
But the compactor took more pull.
Correct. Your open tops in Benton costed you in the month of December $14,398.98. Your compactors costed you $8,055.66.
Pre-crusher off those down rounds, six.
Pre-crusher would really take a lot of this off, as well as getting full boxes. You know, that's what else we've been striving for. If I'm not mistaken, right now, we're averaging about nine tons per pull. It's either 8.75 or nine. I didn't get this week's numbers. Above the mountain, or on the east side of the county, Farner Grassie Creek, and I know you may say, "Well, I don't..." This is very important. It was costing $103.05 a ton in the month of November for Grassie Creek. I signed the check in the month of November for advanced disposal of $21,845.15. Whenever advanced disposal decided to pull out, they also done lot damage. They cut wires off at the top of the ground, only leaving bare minimal to be hooked back to... Whenever they pulled their building out that they wanted $4,500 for, the top lotted in on it and caved upon the truck whenever they got it set.
They didn't throw in their trash.
No, they took it with them. They also took their chains, they took their locks, very, very petty. But anyway, $103.05 a ton is what the average cost was for Grassie Creek. Grassie Creek had 157.84 tons total. The compactor was 97.8 tons and an open top of 60.4 tons. So Grassie Creek's cost was $16,265 of the $21,845.15. Farner, you had, I'm sorry, you had 35 total pulls from Grassie Creek, you had 22 open-top pulls for 60 tons, and you had 13 compactor pulls for 97 tons. So once again, your open tops are what were killing you. At Farner, you had a total of six pulls, three open tops, and three compacters. Your compactor averaged 7.7 tons, your open top averaged 3.55 tons. That's the cost whenever they sit there in the rain, and it rained, all the water. It averaged out at, you had 100, it averages out that Farner, right with advanced disposal, was $164.78 per ton to operate.
So back to the original question. And this sounds good. But bottom line, the video talking about how we should reconsider what we're doing according to what you've got there, and the fact that the trash was thrown out because our employee was doing what he was told to do, is bull... He doesn't know what he's supposed to do there for the people, threw the trash out. And it does look like he threw it out, not just jumped off the back of the truck.
Yes.
So they littered, and our fault.
Somebody broke the rules. And it was the person who recovered his trash.
Anybody who thinks that's questioning anything we've done, like that guy was having people questioning money and how we spend it, every one of them can be tracked back to not educating ourselves. We've got Polk County News, we've got Basin Observer, the meetings are online, we have crossed every T and dotted every I down with a penny. And anybody that says they didn't know or have one complaint, you know, that's on them, not us. I mean, we've been as open and transparent as anybody's ever been. It's been... The papers have covered this for a year now. It's had every penny listed. I mean, there's no room for, no excuse for anybody to have any question besides being uninformed and not asking questions, you know, if you need to ask before you pass judgment. But I've never seen, I've been on this commission 15 years, and I've never seen the process we've been through made more clear to the public and as informational as us taking over sanitation is.
And I think a lot of it is, you know, people that live in Polk County, it is, I get their attitude sort of kind of having to prove it, so to speak, you know? And it will inconvenience me as much as it will anybody in this world. Of course, the woman will, she knows me. But like if I send one of the grandkids, or even Randy, with a dealer tag, and we've got 14, 1100 vehicles that we have garbage off in, so I've got to have this little permit thing stuck in every vehicle that I've got. So it's going, but I'm willing. I don't care what it takes, you know, that's what it takes. So, you know, I'm one of the most inconvenienced ones that you probably could ask for. But if that's what it takes, that's what it takes.
What I'm talking about, we had one on Facebook talking about the poor old sanitation workers. They're taking a pay cut.
Yeah.
Good lord, they're getting a $0.50 higher raise on average, they're gaining state retirements, they're gaining health insurance. You know, we've improved their quality of life by making them county employees. Or if somebody got on Facebook, and I go show them this cows on Facebook, it's not true. I just know what this is gonna do, they're taking a pay cut. That is the most blatant lie I have ever heard. I mean, it's just simply not true.
Part-time's going right at 75 cents increase.
Correct. The part-time employees...
Full-time.
Full-time's got almost two.
And they got state retirement, they got access to better insurance, and you know, how somebody go on Facebook just because they may not agree with what this commission does on other stuff and just blatantly lie is beyond me.
So I take citations off of them, send out...
Yes. Yes, citation movies in as well as we've got some illegal car dealers that took place Saturday, and I'd like to thank...
Still got that one from a couple months ago.
Yes. And I'd like to thank Nick Dally. Nick came out Saturday and helped me stack tires that were done. And once again, the trustees, Roy Keith, I mean, we've worked extremely hard on this, trying to keep that happening. And another thing, you'd say, "What does it matter? It's money, Polk County's taxpayers, law, that we are dealing with."
That's it. I'm putting numbers every way I can do them, and it's always a pain in the butt. But I'd rather say, over the years, what we've been averaging on out-of-county and out-of-state garbage, between South Polk and Lindsdale, Benton gets a bag, but those are bad, and above the mountains, you know, getting it from Georgia to North Carolina, what we've been paying over the years to take care of out-of-county and out-of-state garbage is probably enough to build a new school and make payments on it.
They're sending up the Georgia bill?
Do what? But that's right. Everybody thinks we're being over serious about it, but you know, I don't think you can get too serious about this. It's money, and it's lots of money.
It's money when you ain't got money.
Right.
I'm making motion with your...
Second.
Uh, one thing real quick, I'd like to, uh, next month's meeting, I'd like to change that to the last Thursday.
Friday, Thursday.
Why is that?
Well, I've had a couple people request it, but enough has got objections against it. It don't have to be. I'm just trying to accommodate.
Sorry, I made it 27?
27, if, you know, if it's, you know, majority rules here. I mean, if, you know, whatever, if it's not a big, a big issue, I didn't know whether also, if the school gets out around that 20, if I could, Dewey, did I get out like on the 21st or 2nd of February? Y'all getting time around that time? Okay. Uh, but anyway.
It's no doubt.
Right with it, but anyway, if that's...
27?
The 27.
The agenda at the 19th, the deadline at the 19th.
Okay.
I'll object to that, man. He said, "Hop out, you's doing a grand job," and then he appreciates all your kind of work on this committee.
I hate you. I hate you. Thank you.